It's changed my life tremendously. Like I said, I was homeless. You know, now I'm in the process of looking for a house to buy. Through this program, you know, I came with my addiction. Man, I'm so thankful. You know, I thank the staff at Good Source for giving me the opportunity, man. They helped me out tremendously. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Good Source staff and the city of Orlando. The most rewarding part of this job is getting up every day and trying to keep Orlando beautiful. You know, doing my part and making sure the community and residents are happy with their areas are getting cleaned up. The streets are getting cleaned up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, let's.
I'm on the city council meeting now.
Can you mute the outside speaker? Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Burns, you're first up. Anything you need on agenda review?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Gray?
No, sir. I'll wait till the council. We're fine.
Thanks. Commissioner Ortiz?
Sure, I'm good.
Mr. Stewart? Commissioner Stewart, unmute.
Two things quickly. One of the things I want to say thanks to Dr. Phillips and their generous gift to help us complete their pavilion over there. I'll have some more comments later on. And then the other is I had some conversation with our CRA concerning the ambassadors. I've been playing telephone tag with Lisa Portelli. I'd like to share some concerns. And I guess the concerns I'll share on consent and consent agenda review is really getting information about the success of the ambassador program, seeing the numbers. How many people are we seeing? How many people are we touching? What kind of people are we touching? I believe that information exists, and I'm just trying to get a feel for it as we begin to start to expand another area. I'd like to see some of that information. So that's all that I have, Mayor.
That information does exist, the number of contacts and what type of contacts and those types of things.
I think as a routine, we may want to see something in a report every six months or so, just to kind of get a feel for what's kind of going on in the downtown quarter. Especially I know between Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Hill, I'd like to kind of see those contacts and see who we're talking to.
Has access to to those numbers, and we'll make sure that he makes them available to everybody.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Yeah, I was virtually briefed by staff last week, Mayor, and I called my comments, so too. Thank you.
All right, it's Commissioner Hill.
I've been briefed. Thank you, Mayor. I'm good.
Okay, then we will, without objection, we'll adjourn the agenda review meeting and we will move into the city council meeting. So we'll open with the invocation and pledge allegiance. Commissioner Burns, would you lead us in both of those? Commissioner Burns, you're muted.
If we're bowed by our heads, our Heavenly Father, the Infinite Source, the Creator of all life, we come to you this afternoon first to say thank you. Thank you, Father, for your protection, your provision, and your promise. Lord, I pray that you comfort the family of George Floyd and ask that you hear the cries of our community. I ask that you strengthen and protect us as we express our concerns and demand change. I ask for protection of our law enforcement officers as they facilitate the safe and peaceful protests. Lord, I pray for the collective wisdom of this body to hear, understand, and assist with the needs of our city, the city beautiful. I pray that our leaders in DC and across our nation see the need and desperation of a people that can no longer tolerate the inhumane treatment of those who are supposed to be called to help. I pray that the actions we've witnessed these past few days cause a change in how black people are treated and that all are subjected to the justice system equally. I pray that the lives of our black people do not remain measured solely on our skin color. Lord, I pray for the necessary resources and the will to continue to care for our communities to keep us safe and healthy during this pandemic. I pray for the wisdom of our community members to adhere to social distancing, to wear face coverings, and practice good hygiene. Lord, the challenges that we face today are great. Greater is your power to bring resolve. Lord, I ask you to be with us as we deliberate and conduct the business of the people. This and other blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag and states of America.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
And the visible liberty and justice for all.
Let me call the meeting to order. Madam Clark, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you, Madam Clark. First item of business is consideration of the minutes from the agenda review and city council meeting.
So moved.
Second motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Aye. As opposed to the motion carries, we'll go right into the mayor's update. So I want to start by saying something that I said yesterday at our press conference, and that's that all Americans should agree on one thing. What happened to George Floyd was horrific and unacceptable. And as a community and a nation, we need to recognize why so many people around the country and here in Orlando are participating in demonstrations. And Commissioner Hill was pretty eloquent at our press conference this morning, but it is purely as a result of the many inequalities that exist in our country, especially related to our African-American population. And these demonstrations allow people to speak out and have their voices heard. And for hours and hours on Saturday, our residents did that. And I am so proud of our professionalism of our officers with the OPD that were there to help them march and gather safely. And I have to tell you just anecdotally that one of the officers I spoke to when we were over at OPD this morning said that he was talking to a couple of individuals who live in Paramore, and they're both individuals who are criminals. They've been to jail, and they're out, and they're in jail, and they're out of jail. And they remarked to him that they thought the response of OPD, in their opinion, was unbelievable in terms of the restraint that they have used, that they see outsiders that aren't the people of Paramore that are the ones that are throwing rocks and bottles and stones, and it isn't the people from our community that are the ones that are the troublemakers. So I would caution those who are gauging in demonstrations. If you're in it to be peaceful and you see the troublemakers start to make trouble, get away from them. Don't continue to be associated with them because it's a small group of people that are trying to overshadow the demands for change that Commissioner Burns has prayed about by overshadowing that with violence and vandalism that sends no good message in any way to anybody, especially if you're a small business that's just coming out of the pandemic and your business is being disrupted by being destroyed or looted or broken into. And we've, you know, I was talking with somebody else about we've had such a long history of peaceful demonstrations in Orlando by all sorts of groups. I mean, I consider the gay pride parade as a sort of demonstration, but we've had the KKK and the Nazis and everybody you can think of march through here, and we've always been able to do it peacefully. So I hope as the week progresses that we can get away from some of the late night events that have been more violent and just get back to a peaceful demonstration of what we need to be talking about and thinking about for changes in this country. Also, I want to remind you that, guess what? COVID-19 has not gone away. It's gone to maybe the back page of the newspaper for a little while, but it's still there. And we got to continue to use our collective action to socially distance and make sure that we don't have a recurrence of the virus here. I'm a little concerned with the activities that we are having. I don't see a whole lot of masks on anybody, and I certainly don't see any social distancing. So I'm concerned that the protest activities, while well-intentioned, may also bring back the virus. So we need to continue to be vigilant about testing. So we'll be testing Commissioner Stewart at the Rosemont Center. You're the last district that we're getting to for a neighborhood center, but we will be there tomorrow from nine to one. You can make an appointment, but it's not necessary. You've just got to be 18 and be from Orlando or Orange County to be tested. Also, this week, we are starting to reopen some of our city facilities. We started our small group summer camps at our neighborhood centers, the tennis centers opening, six of our pools, escape park, Swan Boat Rentals, Menlo Museum, and Discover Downtown. All of our facilities are going to have required temperature screenings and limited capacities to comply with CDC and state of Florida rules. Here is an important one. I want to congratulate Commissioner Stewart on his retirement as executive director of the Christian Service Center, which he's led since 1995. And I appreciated the opportunity to come serve with you on your last official day as executive director. That was a treat for me. So we thank you for your commitment and your compassion as you've directed the center. And I know that you'll assist Eric Ray as he assumes those responsibilities. So I'd like to give you a hand, just a virtual hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
And then finally, on behalf of our entire council, I want to send our condolences to the family and friends of former city commissioner Frankie Hellinger, who passed away last month. Now that it's, we're in a new month. She was elected to two terms in District Four before retiring in 1996. And she was active in a lot of community organizations, including being a founding member of the Coalition for the Homeless of Central Florida. So if we could, could we just take a moment of silence in honor of Frankie? Thank you. May God rest her soul. I do want to just mention two things. I was going to speak about the pavilion in the Packing District and thanking Dr. Phillips Foundation. But you know what, Commissioner Stewart, I'm going to not steal your thunder, and I'll let you talk about that funding. But we're very grateful for that. The park is under construction as we speak, and it's going to end up being a great jewel in District Three. And then the funding agreement between the CRA and the Orlando Land Trust for Public Land that's going to help us expand Lake Yola Park and ensure green space is preserved, but also that purchase is going to ensure we don't end up with a high rise on the southeast corner of Lake Yola Park that blocks the view and the access to the park for a lot of people. And it's part of our overall city vision. And I want to thank Commissioner Sheehan for her contribution. We voted on several commission meetings ago, or maybe we were still live, I think, when we were doing that. We're actually in city council chambers. So with that, I will move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted on through a single vote of council. We rotate the, or give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and things of general interest in their commissioned districts. We rotate the order that we do that, and Commissioner Burns is first up today.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, fellow commissioners. Mayor, I'd just like to echo your sentiments about the professionalism and the restraint displayed by the officers of OPD during this, during the protests. It's very much appreciated. I received a picture of Chief Ralone and Sheriff Mina kneeling in front of, in front of some of the protests. And I think that was a great gesture and spoke volumes for our approach as a city to allow the protesting to happen, but also to recognize that there is some hurting in our communities. Also, I'd like to applaud Chief Ralone for committing to releasing the body camera footage so that the public can see what led up to the dispersing of the tear gas. I think that's going to go a long way again with us showing that we are being transparent. And as I reflect on the activities of the past several days of the peaceful protests, the damage to property and violence, I must say that no one wants to see violence, property damage. But what we must understand is that in this moment, what we are witnessing is mourning and outrage. That's a result of trauma that has been in the black community for years. And Mr. George Floyd's death was simply, I believe, not simply, but a tipping point. The trauma that exists in the black community is perpetuated, unacknowledged, and goes unaddressed. And as a black man, I watched the video of George Floyd's life being taken by the now ex-police officer. And I began to reflect back on the several times that I have encountered police officers in my years and how I felt the color of my skin influenced how I was treated. To hear George Floyd plead for his life, plead for relief, state that he could not breathe, and then call out for his deceased mother was traumatic for me. So I understand the hurt. I understand the anger and the outrage because I too am hurt. I am angry, and I am outraged. And as a city and as the elected representative, we must listen to the people, acknowledge that racism and racial bias still exist in our society, and take the necessary steps to protect and serve all members of our community regardless of race. We as a body must do what we can to weed out racism, discrimination, and injustice in our city. Mayor Dyer and fellow commissioners, it starts here with us. And I'm, you know, I'm new to the commission, but I do commend all of my fellow commissioners and new mayor for always acting in a manner that was inclusive, and I want to be a part of continuing, continuing that. So thank you for, to the other commissioners for all that you do. Also, I want to say thank you to the Family Parks and Recs because there's been a lot of challenges, and I just really appreciate their flexibility in moving the staff, changing of programs, moving in-person programs to virtual and digital programs. So I'd just like to say thank you to them, and that's, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got some comments on other parts of the agenda, but not the consent. So I will just yield my time and we'll move along. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, I just want to echo the words of everybody, for that matter, in terms of how the police department, both in the city and the sheriff's office, has been reacting to all this protest. I just ask of the public to, to be good witnesses so they can help the police also stop this nonsense because those people taking advantage of this. when we were doing that, we're actually in city council chambers. So with that, I will move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted on through a single vote of council. We rotate the, or give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and things of general interest in their commissioned districts. We rotate the order that we do that and Commissioner Burns is first up today.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and a good afternoon, fellow commissioners. Mayor, I'd just like to echo your sentiments about the professionalism and the restraint displayed by the officers of OPD during this, during the protests. It's very much appreciated. I received a, a picture of Chief Ralone and Sheriff Mina kneeling in front of, in front of some of the protests. And I think that was a, a great gesture and spoke volumes for our approach as a city to allow the protesting to, to happen, but also to recognize that there is some hurting in our communities. Also, I'd like to applaud Chief Ralone for committing to releasing the body camera footage so that the public can see what led up to the dispersing of the tear gas. I think that's going to go a long way again with us showing that we are being transparent. And as I reflect on the activities of the past several days of the peaceful protests, the damage to property and violence, I must say that no one wants to see violence, property damage. But what we must understand is that in this moment, what we are witnessing is mourning and outrage. That's a result of trauma that has been in the black community for years. And Mr. George Floyd's death was simply, I believe, not simply, but a tipping, tipping point. The trauma that exists in the black community is perpetuated, unacknowledged and goes unaddressed. And as a black man, I watched the video of George Floyd's life being taken by the now ex-police officer. And I began to reflect back on the several times that I have encountered police officers in my years and how I felt the color of my skin influenced how I was treated. To hear George Floyd plead for his life, plead for relief, state that he could not breathe, and then call out for his deceased mother was traumatic for me. So I understand the hurt. I understand the anger and the outrage, because I too am hurt. I am angry and I am outraged. And as a city and as the elected representative, we must listen to the people, acknowledge that racism and racial bias still exist in our society, and take the necessary steps to protect and serve all members of our community regardless of race. We as a body must do what we can to weed out racism, discrimination and injustice in our city. Mayor Dyer and fellow commissioners, it starts here with us. And I'm, you know, I'm new to the commission, but I do commend all of my fellow commissioners and new mayor for always acting in a manner that was inclusive. And I want to be a part of continuing, continuing that. So thank you for, to the other commissioners for all that you do. Also, I want to say thank you to the Family Parks and Rex, because there's been a lot of challenges and I just really appreciate their flexibility in moving the staff, changing of, of programs, moving in-person programs to, to virtual and digital programs. So I'd just like to say, uh, uh, thank you to them. And that's, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Gray?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I've got some comments on other parts of the agenda, but not the consent. So I will just yield my time and we'll move along. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, I just want to echo the words of everybody, for that matter, in terms of how the police department, both in the city and the sheriff's office, has been reacting to all this protest. I just ask of the public to, to be good witnesses so they can help the police also stop this nonsense because those people taking advantage of this tragedy to, to loot, to do damage to property. And once they start doing that, they, they stop being protesters to be criminals and, and we need to stop that. And, and also offensive image of those who are legitimately walking and protesting this horrific tragedy. So I just ask of the public to be good witnesses and help the police, a police that has joined everybody in the sentiment of grief and, and is a police that their, the badge has been offended, has been tarnished by two or three, and we cannot allow for that. We should maintain a positive attitude towards the police, knowing that the majority of police officers do their job with pride and do their job with, with love because they want to help people. So with that being said, in that particular aspect, I just want to go ahead and convey, convey that message in addition to what everybody else have said. Real quick, I just want to talk about the, on Tuesday, May 26, I joined the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metro Orlando for a virtual cafe and we had an important conversation about the city of Orlando efforts to assist local businesses with the effect of COVID-19. Want to thank them for not only having me, but also for the amazing work they've been doing to display their passion for helping our community. Also want to recognize Prospera and the Hispanic Federation for their nonstop efforts during one of the greatest times of need in our city. On the 26th of May, I also visited Gateway Orlando during their distribution of personal protective equipment provided by the city to District Two. Gateway Orlando has been a, a present and reliable partner for our gateway businesses during these unprecedented times and their efforts do not go unnoticed. I want to thank Ms. Sherri Gudge and Pauline Eaton for the great job that they've been doing in maintaining the engagement of our main streets. On the 28th, I had Acceleration East Academy celebrated, celebrated their senior drive out for a final farewell of senior students. And I want to thank Principal Loftus and staff for having me to send off our seniors. I wish them a future of continued growth, knowledge and success. And lastly, I would like to convey my appreciation for District Two Neighborhood Leaders. Each week, they continue to be a part of a virtual meeting, keeping my office aware of what's going on in our neighborhoods and also allowing us to share important updates and information with them. That's what I have on that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to District Three. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. And I also, along with everybody else, would like to briefly acknowledge the officers of OPD for their diligent work, as well as our residents who are collectively making their voices known through the protests of our city regarding not only the, the death of George Floyd, but also the countless others who have come under the same type of scrutiny. These inequities exist in our country and we need to continue to work hard on. I'm honored to serve alongside you, Mayor, because I think we have accomplished great deals in our city because of your leadership, but more importantly, to stand along with law-abiding citizens as they move forward. I can't understand what they're going through. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Burns. They mean a great deal to me. But know that we stand with you and we stand that nobody should be judged by the color of their skin. And so we want to make sure that's the case. So thank you to OPD. Thank you to our citizens. I appreciate that. Couple of the comments I'd like to share, one is, thank you for your comments about Frankie Hellinger. I got a chance to know Frankie back when I was a young child and she came back from her missionary work in India with her and her husband. There's something special about when you raise six children. I think you can accomplish about anything you want in the world. And he, she decided that, that it wasn't enough to raise six children. She'd take on the city hall as well. So she, she did a great job while she was here. I get a chance to cover part of the area. I know the Commissioner Sheehan has covered part of the area as well. And, but she's going to be missed and she's left a wonderful legacy, not only in her faith, but also in her community service. It's been glad to virtually engage with different neighborhoods in the last couple of weeks. And also, we've tried to do some Neighborhood Watch meetings with OPD. Appreciate the work that Georgiana and George, George Anna has done. And and we're going to continue to do that as, as long as we have to. Tonight, the College Park Neighborhood Associations have another one of their virtual meetings. I've attended the one for Rosemont and tenants and others. So if you're interested, go to College Park Neighborhood Association's website and you can join in. Mayor, thank you for your comments about the, the COVID testing up in the Rosemont Neighborhood Center tomorrow. It's from nine to one. A appointment is suggested, but not required. But please try to sign up to make sure that we have plenty of test kits for everybody who is there. And the information is on the city's website. I appreciate that. Thank you. On the agenda, let me mention a couple of quick things. But one is the Mayor's Matching Grant. A special thanks to those who've applied. College Park Main Street has got a gift just in District Three. Of course, Central Florida Community Arts Junior League. Mayor, every time we do this, I want to, how much I appreciate us continuing to keep this forward. It's a way for us to engage different types and different parts of our community and, and be an encourager to neighborhood development. And I appreciate your leadership and continue to move forward. And then on item D2 is a big gift. And if you allow me a, a, a point of personal privilege, I'd like to everybody can round of applause. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. A $1.5 million gift from Dr. Phillips for a new pavilion at the new Packing District Park over there. So we're thankful for that. They've agreed that cost, won't cost us anything. So if there's any additional cost overruns, they'll take care of those. They'd like to use it 12 times a year, which is a great deal for us. And it'll be maintained and, and scheduled and handled by our Parks Department. What a great gift. That's going to continue. I'm excited about the legacy that they're going to leave over there in our district. There've been some concerns raised by the community about sound. We have gone back and looked at a couple of things. We're going to be working as we move closer to creating some guidelines for those that are there. But as a reminder, we have a, the decibel rating is 50 feet from the, we're concerned about, in fact, you have a very loud noise that is measured at their property line. It's not, it's measured from the origin of the sound. So it, with the, what we've got over there in terms of trees blocking it and this, unfortunately, this sound ordinance, you won't see or hear very much in the neighborhood that would be concerned. So we're going to continue to educate the neighborhood. And as we move forward, I'm looking forward to a really kind of a neat opportunity over there. So, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for your leadership. It was good standing with you yesterday and today. And I appreciate the reports that we've been getting back and forth about the quality work that we've been doing. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will move to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. And I'd like to thank the residents of District Four. Today is my 20-year anniversary. And after today, I'll become the longest-serving City Commissioner in Orlando history. So thank you. Thank you very much, District Four residents, for your confidence in me. I love serving. And sorry, Wally Standerlin, I just broke your record. Wally Standerlin was a District Three Commissioner who had the record previous to me. But the reason why it just happened now is because we changed the election date. So thanks, everybody. And I too want to recognize Frankie Hellinger. I actually met her at a, when she was having a neighborhood meeting about Lou Gardens. And she said, you know what? I want to appoint you as the person that talks on behalf of Colonial Town. And, you know, she really did a lot to kind of encourage me, even though she didn't support me elections, but she encouraged me to participate in, in city issues. And I'm really proud of what she has done to help those less fortunate. The Reeves Terrace Playground is actually named after Frankie Hellinger because she wanted to make sure that those children had, that the children of Reeves Terrace had a safe place to play and really advocated for that. So I want to thank Frankie for that and all she's done. And, and my condolences to her family during this difficult time. She was a great lady and left a great legacy. I want to thank the Orlando Police Department, too. I think some of my comments on social media have been misunderstood. I have been peacefully protesting as a member of the LGBTQ community and, and as a, in the women's community and for civil rights for my entire adult life. I think that, that peaceful protest is fine. But what I do not condone is violence and I think it's wrong. I think that what happened to George Floyd was murder. It was horrible and it needs to be condemned. And I'm glad that our sheriff and our chief condemned the way that that man was killed and it was awful. But I, but again, I do not feel that, that violence is the answer. And there's been some statements saying, well, you know, violence is the way you get attention. Well, you know, I was certainly in the international spotlight when 49 people and hundreds, 49 people were killed and hundreds were traumatized because someone wanted attention, because they wanted to bring their horrible terrorist beliefs to the forefront. So I do not believe violence is the answer, never will. And if you disagree with me, that's fine. But I think it's time for me to listen to my colleagues. I want to thank Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Hill for your passionate leadership and, and concern and, and words of power and peace. I want to thank you for that. But also advocating for justice. And I think that's what really needs to happen now. We in the white community need to listen, but there also needs to be, you know, the way that we had success, people have brought up the Stonewall riots in the LGBTQ community. But what they're forgetting is that it was through working with elected officials, with talking about the discrimination in public accommodation, housing and employment, talking about the things that we actually needed for equality. And I think that it's time to listen. It's time to, this, this council and the Orlando Police Department has put a lot in place to make sure with body cams and things like that, that people are treated fairly. But what we need to start concentrating on is action because I do believe you get a lot more done with a pen than you do with a brick. And I think it's time that we start writing legislation and doing, and listening and doing some things to make sure that doesn't happen here. But the reason I was so angry, I'm going to be honest about what happened, was because I represent a, a large portion of the Asian businesses along Colonial Drive. And they were disproportionately impacted by the violence that happened over the weekend. And I think it's really sad that someone comes to this country to have solace and, and build a business after they were criminally treated in their own country, Vietnam. They come here for solace and they come here to start a new life. And their businesses are the ones that are negatively impacted. So if I'm passionate about this, I think injustice anywhere is wrong, but I also think it was really wrong what happened to the Asian businesses along Colonial Drive. So if I got a little angry, sorry about that. But I don't think violence is the answer. I never will. And I think we need to listen and, and work together. And, and I don't think throwing rocks or bricks at police are the answer either. I have many friends in the police department, too. So let's, I think, I think the police handle themselves with restraint and dignity and I appreciate that. But violence is, is, is never the answer. So that, that's enough on that. That's not enough on that. I think we're going to be having continued dialogue over the next several months on, on what the best practices moving forward are going to be. But I think we need to do so in a peaceful, respectful and dignified and decent manner because that's who we are in Orlando. And we inspire the world to help our, the LGBTQ community, not by being violent, but by talking about love. I would like to, on the agenda today, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on item C6. I have been asked by the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, do some artwork for their new out of the closet locations. So I have filed the appropriate paperwork with the clerk's office and look forward to this wonderful new business located in my district. I also want to congratulate the Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grant recipients for all the great work they do in community. And also want to thank Sherri Gudge, Brooke Bonnet, and all the folks in economic development for the work that they've been doing for COVID-19. Item C16 is actually with the Thornton Park Business District and Thornton Park Main Street. We are working to open up Thornton and Osceola as a pilot project for outdoor dining to actually extend some of the areas available to the rest, to the restaurants and businesses over there. So I think that is just absolutely amazing. And Commissioner Stewart, got a hat tip. That Packing District is going to be wonderful. Look forward to, to, to what's going to happen over there. And, and that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Hill, you're still muted.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I also want to say congratulations to you, Commissioner Stewart, for all your service to the most vulnerable citizens of them all. Before it was popular, before there was funding put in place, you were over there in Paramore. I know since I was almost a little girl, not trying to tell your age or anything, but helping those folks and, and, and even someone like myself. I can remember maybe in the, the late eighties, early nineties, having to go to, over to the Christian Service Center to keep my lights on, to go over at some times where I was trying to go to college and trying to turn my life around and still raise three kids in, in diapers almost. And you provided, your agency provided me with food. So, you know, I just, it's an honor and a privilege to legislate here with you in almost 30 years or so later from, from the times I had to utilize those very important services. Because oftentimes, people would think that Christian Service Center or those that help our most needy citizens with utilities, with rent, that they're lazy and, and, and slothsful and welfare dependent and, you know, just taking advantage of the system. But those type of services are hand-ups, right? And too, we can do better. So thank you for, for your dedication with that, Commissioner. And I'm quite pleased to hear that Eric Gray, someone who I've been working with since being in office and even had to utilize, not when he was there, over, over there off of Michigan. You guys have chose a great person to somewhat take the baton. I don't want to say follow in your footsteps because everybody have their own platform, but Eric is, is a person that has compassion to the working poor and the most vulnerable citizens. So congratulations to Eric. I also would like to send a condolences to Mr. Pete Crati, you know, who lost his beloved daughter that was only 29, 28 years old, 29 years old, I believe Jessica was, to an awful disease of, of, you know, of addiction. And I, I attended that, that funeral as, as a, someone that can understand the loss of, of a child. But, you know, when it comes to substance abuse and addictions, it sees no color. It sees no party line. And it goes and grips our family members or sometime ourselves, regardless what that addiction, alcohol, sex, whatever it might be, and, and, and won't let it, let that person or that family go. So, you know, in, in honor of many of the Jessicas and Joes of the world, I've decided to work with Pete, which is a recovering addict, and his wife Cindy Crati, which is also a recovering addict. They have identified that there is no NA meeting places within the west side of Orlando and especially in my district. And we are talking about COVID and, and, and so many other injustices. And for me, there is something that's happening on the west side of Orlando that isn't being spoken about. And that is our young adults. And I believe some of this violence is related to it, that are now addicted to a drug called Molly and nowhere to be treated. And, and, and order for us to really continue to turn this tide, we're going to have to address not just opiate addiction, but also the, the, the drug of choice now for our African American youth is that drug, Molly, and trying to find resources and funding so that they can get help. And also giving resources to those family members that just don't know what to do with this Molly epidemic over on the west side of Orlando. So bringing some, I think they call it, no Al-Anon, right? But knock, knock on for, for families, for, for, for those that might be impacted by narcotics. So I'm hopeful for that. Pete Crati and Mayor Crati, which was his niece, I continue to send my condolences and my oath to you that I made on that day as you funeralize your, your, your niece and daughter. That I'll do what I can to help us address some of the things of the unspoken on that west side of Orlando. Also, with that, I'm just as excited as Also, with that, I'm just as excited as Commissioner Stewart with the Dr. Phillips donation of the amphitheater. It is in District Three. But what many don't know that that whole Packing House District Sports Complex is going to be a collaborative sharing space for those great residents there in the Mercy Drive Corner. So they'll be able to utilize that, that is a sharing space. Me and Commissioner Stewart's been working with Dr. Phillips and having dual meetings throughout the community for the last year now, and I'm glad to say that. And I do think that is going to be another, when we start talking about race relations and equality and and classism. I see that feel. I didn't think about it then, Commissioner Stewart and Mayor Dyer and Council. Because we didn't, we've always had this, but we just wasn't talking about it, is how that those feels over there in that packing district is going to be, I think, some bridges over troubled waters on how we can connect those those the haves and the have-nots over in that area. And 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 creating programs to where the little children and families that were building up over in the Mercy Drive Corner and turning their lives around are now playing baseball and soccer and all those great things over there in District Three. And having those same opportunities personally that I had, Commissioner Stewart. I grew up there in Paramore, and one of the things that got me out of Paramore and and exposed me to other things was District Three. It was being able to canoe down Lake Orlando and doing scavenger hunts with Leslie Martin, Dr. Martin's daughter. That became my best friend, and I did stayovers there because of a baseball field that the city had over at Audubon Park. They took us kids, some of a group of us from Paramore, and we played baseball over there in Audubon Park. And that's when I knew that there were other things out there, and people were people, not just the color of our skin. I felt that I was isolated, segregated. So I I I hope that is those those fields and that amphitheater and 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 through the leadership of Rodney Williams and Lisa Early and Mayor Dyer and this council, that that can be that conduit. On the mayor's matching grant, I am just so excited to to each year when when the mayor announces the folks that's been awarded. And 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 Mayor, I got to say, most times they are in almost those funding, those funds through some great partners, and those services usually go to some of our most impacted communities of color. I'm going to call a thing a thing. And and there has been set aside for ballet. These things here that we, these our inner-city kids truly need exposure to so that they can cultivate their giftings that they don't even know lie inside that's lying dormant, but because of these precious opportunities in great opera. I do see some kids in District Five standing on the big stage and 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 being operettas and and the arts and crafts and paintings over there at McCray art reach over in Paramore and the ballet and the symphony and all those things. So I just want to thank Marcia and Julie and, of course, Mayor yourself for continuing this mayor's matching grant and bringing quality partners to our to our to our communities. And I'm also working with Orange County Health Department. They have been given a grant, and they will be working with me and District Five on healthy kids. And that is when it comes to nutrition, wellness, and finding primary health care. So we'll be doing that. I focused on that Mercy Drive Corner. Of course, we're so fortunate in Paramore. There's so many resources, and I think that's the next frontier is making sure those kids and families over there, we're doing great affordable and quality housing. Thanks to Chief Chief Ralone. This was under works way before even the protest protesting that myself and he, and I know, Mayor, you were part of this. By some of my briefings, we hadn't spoke, but I was getting briefed about how can we impact the youth and turn their lives around, especially those that might be delinquent or are at risk. And with this new program that Chief Ralone is rolling out with a community policing and an education and health and wellness over in that Mercy Drive Corner, I think it's going to be a success. And I'd like to thank Mr. On May fourteenth, Thursday, my Northwest Community Center. I don't know why I always say my center. I take such ownership. I need to stop doing that. Our center. Over at Northwest, we were able to dispense two hundred plus COVID testing where we had people drive up and walk up, also bicycle up. And at that time, I joined Mr. Abdullah Taru along with I Smalley Muslim Community, which donated over twenty-five hundred masks. And we also partnered with CEO Bukhari Burns of the Orange Blossom Family Health Center. And they also did some testing on another, on that May fourteenth. And I served. So I'd like to thank everyone for that. And I apologize, Mayor Dyer, yours was the nineteenth. Bukhari, mine with Commissioner Burns was the fourteenth. So within that week alone, we tested close close to six hundred of our residents on the west side of Orlando. And that was very significant. Unfortunately, Mayor Dyer, I do believe after how can I say this properly? As we move forward and we start to go into our new norm, right, of discussing some of our racial issues and health disparities and and classism and economics here in the area, I do believe that we're gonna, and I'm hoping we don't. But I'm thinking that we might have to do another aggressive round of testing because of, as you stated earlier so eloquently, the social distancing, the lack of masks amongst thousands of people here in our city corner. So I want to see how that's going to work out during this pandemic, if we're going to get an uptick. You guys had done such a great job, this city and this county, and yourself with Mayor, with the collaboration of Mayor Dimon's on really curbing that COVID. Thought we were, by the way, but, you know, life happens and we deal with it. And lastly, I would like to thank True Live for donating over forty-five hundred, excuse me, forty-five computers to District Five to their families to assist with virtual learning as we continue distant learning, something. And that was through the collaboration of Spectrum Communications. What we found that many, almost four thousand of our kids here in the OCPS system and many over in the west side of Orlando because of the digital divide, did not log in one time since spring break. It was because they did not have internet access, nor did they have, the elementary kids especially did not have laptops, iPads or notebooks. So through the Recreation Department, Lisa Early and Rodney Williams, they have gone out for all of our communities. Well, the bulk of those that are open to hire teachers here through the OCPS system to make sure that our children become current so that they can continue to thrive. Because we do know education is the greatest equalizer, and we do not want our children to fall behind. So these are very important. And believe it or not, I will say lifes saving computers because we know if our children do not sell in in education, the other result is is detention centers. So hopefully, this can help, and I'd like to thank Spectrum and True Life. And with that, Mayor, I will approve to move, will ask to motion to approve this agenda to move it forward.
Motion by Commissioner Hill. He's seconded it. Burns. Seconded by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, Madam Clerk let it show that it passed unanimously. Okay, that's passing of the consent agenda. If there's no objection, we'll recess the city council meeting and we'll convene the CRA meeting. Thomas, there's two items on the agenda. Would you like to address them for us?
Certainly. Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor. Number one today is approving a funding agreement between the CRA, the Orlando Land Trust, and the Trust for Public Lands Incorporated related to the purchase of property. As you all are probably aware, the two thousand and fifteen update to the downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Plan called the DT Outlook has several key findings. One of those key findings was a need for improving and adding to the amount of green space and park space within the downtown core. In fact, if you look at the plan, there's an entire section of that plan which is devoted to addressing parks and open space. With the with the need to create and enhance open spaces within the CRA noted as an opportunity for the CRA to seize upon. We see this as a prime, a such a prime opportunity to seize upon, particularly given that the Orlando Land Trust, a group of very visionary and generous citizens, are committing and agreeing to raise more than one point six million dollars to donate toward this effort. And so we think that's that's a prime opportunity that we should seize upon. Additionally, the DT Outlook also raises the opportunity to create or notices the opportunity to create what's called signatory gateways and entrances throughout downtown amenities here within our downtown core. The property at the northeast corner of Central Boulevard and Roseland Avenue is located at what we feel is such a potential gateway. This way, this time, a gateway into Lake Yola Park. The Trust for Public Lands, or TPL, has entered into a contract to purchase the property from the current owner. And TPL and the Orlando Land Trust have entered into an additional agreement relating to the purchase of the property and fundraising to make sure that the property is preserved as parkland in perpetuity. So the agreement before you today would call for the CRA provide funding of up to one point two two five million dollars toward the purchase of the property and to ensure that its perpetual use would be open space and as a city park. The funding will be provided at closing, which is anticipated to be next spring. And TPL would immediately convey title of the property to CRA subsequent to that to that closing. The, again, we see this as an opportunity to enhance what I've always felt, and I mean, I think, with the greatest crown jewel of downtown Orlando, one that's enjoyed by by millions on an annual basis, it's open draw. And an amenity which significantly enhances the downtown Orlando offerings or experience, ETO experience, if you will. And so I'll pause at this time there for any questions.
Questions or Commissioner Sheen, would you like to do the honors?
Oh, Mayor, yeah, I certainly would like to move this. And I, as Thomas has so eloquently stated, this is our signature park. There was a lot of controversy about this corner as it was going to be redeveloped as a high-rise. It was an overwhelming amount of folks who did not want to see that, who wanted to see that remain green space. I got to tell you, Eugenia Sefcek and Lynn Lynn Long, residents of of downtown Orlando, decided to take it upon themselves to Orlando Land Trust and work with the Trust for Public Land to try to preserve this property. Because I basically said, you know, it's going to be hard for me to continue to ask for, you know, the city council for more funding. The the difficulty here, though, is that, you know, they they have been, here we are in one of the most difficult times to raise funding, probably in Orlando history. This is to kind of help them out, and they're still going to have to raise one point six million dollars, which is pretty, you know, pretty significant. But I just want to thank them for their commitment to Orlando and for their commitment to raising this money. I also want to thank the Trust for Public Land for, again, helping us add to our signature parks. Trust for Public Land worked with us on the Orlando Urban Trail. They worked with us on the one point five acres on the other side of Lake Yola Park. So I just think that this is a wonderful opportunity for us to add park space to our signature park. And even though it may not be contiguous, hopefully it may be. Maybe we can add to it someday. But, you know, again, I think this is a really good step, and it will preserve, you know, at least that clip to where we won't have a large high-rise infringing upon the park. And which was something that people expressed a great deal of concern over. Everyone I heard from, you know, pretty much was was opposed to it. So anyway, I'd like to move approval of the agenda item today, and thank you so much.
I'll second that, Mayor, but I do have a comment.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Hill, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. And I I just think this is a a a great opportunity to create more green space, especially in that beautiful regional park there at Lake Yola. Not trying to be Debbie Downer. As you know, I am in full support of this, and I think that Orlando Land Trust is a great, great trust, especially, you know, Ted Haddock, that that guy is is a man after God's own heart in my eyes. He was part of that spearheading us with Tinkerfield over there, also with the Little League, about the Negro game with the the other baseball players. So so I'm not against that. What I am here to talk about, and I'm just saying it for the record. I've spoken to Thomas and Walter about this, and it's regarding Paramore, Mayor. I have, the last couple of years have asked Walter and 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 Thomas to identify the last relics of Old Paramore, some of our historic land sites that are still standing. And how can we purchase them and our partner with some folks to restore them so that we can it's it's just like Commissioner stated, once a building go up, someone stated, if a building go up there, we'll never be able to possess that land over near Lake Yola. So we want to make sure that we continue to create green space there. But if if they knock buildings down in Paramore, we'd never be able to retrieve our history anymore. So do you want us to continue to move forward to see how we can continue to preserve the rich history in Paramore? We only got probably about five or six landmarks there left, Mayor. And one of them that I want to focus on is one that the city owns, and that is the first black postal, postmaster house there that sits on West Moreland and and in Paramore, next door to Bethel, Bethel Church. Beautiful, beautiful home, but of course, needs some renovation. And in times such as this, you know, I I I'll be honest, I have been speaking with some some of those in the legal community. I think that'd be a perfect site, Mayor and Council, for a restorative justice center with the right partners. And we do have some law schools that's right here in the area, in particular in Paramore. So if we can, Thomas, continue to work on that and try to find some funding. I know we've been going down that avenue and trying to get some numbers, but I think now is the time for us to go ahead and find some CRA dollars. We own the property, restore it, work with a a a college or nonprofit that can help us towards the goal of restorative justice and transformational change with that with that emphasis there. And then, of course, Mayor, like I said, look at some of the other landmarks. But if we can continue down that road and pay major focus on that house, because right now, if you drive by their code enforcement and staff and in real estate, I must say, tried their best to keep it boarded up and preserve it as much as possible. But it's falling to shambles. Weeds are growing up on it. It'd be a shame that we have a lucrative CRA that we can find millions for different projects, even in Paramore. We've invested a lot in Paramore with quality affordable housing. But I would hope that we can restore that house before it falls to the ground, Mayor.
We'll take a look at it, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Stewart.
Mayor, I've got a couple of quick questions for Thomas. Thomas, I, when this came to us originally, I'm trying to remember, I just want to have you share some history. I was under the impression that the CRA was going to take over the land, you know, raise the building and then and then create the park there. And there was an investment that we were set aside for that. Tell me a little bit about the history, about where we are now in terms of having to put some money to acquire the land now.
Yeah, as you know, the property is privately owned, and as has been noted early, I'm not sure if this distinct fact has been noted, but the good people of the Orlando Land Trust actually approached us about this opportunity. And they had a, they have a very passionate vision and view of Lake Yola and as to what its future should be and what its future hopefully will not be. I think some of, I can speculate that some of it was probably stoked by past, as you recall, past high-profile efforts to redevelop this particular site, as well as the current condition of the site and some of the things, some of the activities that perpetuate happen around the site. And so these citizens came forth and indicated a willingness to raise a significant amount of money, as I say, it works out to be $1.625 million, and donate that toward this effort. And so that's what's, you know, pretty much being brought to you today. So those other things would still have to happen, the things that you just noted that were originally going to happen. So because it is privately owned, we'd have to first acquire it. This gives us an opportunity to acquire it for a net outlay of considerably less than fair market value for the property, again, because of the donation of the Orlando Land Trust to it. And so subsequent to that, and I want to make it clear that, as I said, the closing for this transaction, TPL's closing is projected to be in the spring of 2021. Ownership of the property will be conveyed immediately to the CRA. However, there is a lease on the property, as you know, a major tenant lease, and that lease cannot be terminated until June of 2023. And so for approximately two years, if you will, the CRA would be, become the landowner and landlord, if you would, of the current tenant, and would receive, continue to receive the proceeds from, the rental fees associated with that lease would be therefore coming to the CRA, as a matter of fact. But the sequence would be closing next spring, conveying the property to the CRA, CRA probably through the city's real estate division would manage the property until June of 2023. At that time, the lease would be terminated, and the property would be raised and re-landscaped, if you will, and sure, design and whatnot would come before you to consider what it would look like after the demolition.
Would you do me a favor and provide, when you get a chance, a budget of what you expect? What's the, what's the revenue that will be coming in? What's the cost of the building? I'm a little concerned only because I, part of me thinks that we just sort of bought it from the very beginning and moved forward with it, which would have been kind of okay with me. But I feel like we, we're in a position that we have to move forward, but I, I was under the impression that we were going to end up with a gift back, and then our, in perpetuity gift was to raise the building and maintain it for, for forever. So it looks like, I think, maybe the economy has gotten to us in terms of the fundraising, and I know that they've got a short window of time to raise the money, that was one of the concerns, and this may help them out from that standpoint, and maybe the revenue stream coming in from the building will help offset some of the costs in terms of raising the building and doing the other repairs. So I think I'd like to see the budget for that, if you will. It's, you know, I think it's a good idea to acquire all the land we possibly can around Lake Yola for the sake of our citizenry, but at the same time, I'd like to have a better feel for the entire cost of the project, okay?
Understood, Commissioner, and I'd like to say to you and to the mayor and to all the commissioners, as you know, this is a little atypical for how, for the background information that we normally present to you to consider as you're, as you're voting. We're hampered, if I can use those terms this time, by number one, the confidentiality agreement that third parties, different third parties have agreed to and have to abide by. However, I can, I can assure you that, as is always the case, every step of the way regarding this transaction, the negotiations, and what we're presenting to you today has been scrutinized by the city attorney's office. Stacey Adams has worked a ton on this, and she's reached out to Wes, and she's reached out to Roy, and so, but Stacey's put in a ton of time on this in making sure that we're on solid ground and within solid putting, which would be consistent with what we're accustomed to. We have seen the purchase price, we've not seen the lease, there's been a company, we've not been able to actually see the lease. We are now, though, requesting or requiring that the lease be seen by us prior to us funding at the closing. So, so I do apologize for the lack of definitive information, particularly financial type information that normally accompanies a request like this. Overly simplified, it's an opportunity, however, for us to gain a strategic piece of property at significantly less than, than, than fair market value, significantly less. So, again, that's overly simplified, and that was always in detail. But I just want to assure you that City Attorney's Office has been our guide all direct, all the way through this entire process, and talked to the other attorneys representing all the other parties, including seven of them. So that's where we are. I'd be happy to get you what information is available to us at this time, that you can get a more full picture of what the transaction entails.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, 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 I've got my hand up, I think. Yeah, thank you. I'm struggling a bit with this, so I'm going to be a little bit of a governor on the economics of this. Certainly, I agree with everyone that the more land we can acquire around Lake Yola, the better. It is our crown jewel. The economics of this, especially in the fact that where we are with COVID right now, I think is a bit much. I mean, look at it, this, we're going to put up a million, two twenty-five, Trust for Public Land is going to come in with a million six. So even if they forgive that, by the time we tear the building down, we're going to be into this thing for a million and a half bucks. And what do we get for that? We get a tenth of an acre on a hard corner with no visibility to Lake Yola, because you've got a building on the north of that that blocks your view, and you've got two office buildings on the east of that. So to me, this looks like one of several pieces of a compilation, but I'm hesitant to buy this, because once you own it, right, they raise the money, we put up our million three, we buy it, you're at the, you're at the mercy of your two adjacent property owners, and without them cooperating and selling you what they have, you've got a tenth of an acre on a hard corner that does not give you access to Lake Yola, as I understand it, because those buildings are adjacent to this property. So when you, when you put that in the backdrop of COVID and all the things we don't know about what's going to affect businesses downtown, I just don't know that this is the right time to be spending, you know, a million, million and a half bucks. That's my, that's my two cents, and that's why I'm struggling with it.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Gray. This is a long-term play, and the adjacent property owners, there have been several development plans, I don't know, three or four probably, that have been put forward for multi-story various projects. I think there was a W going there at one point, and all types of different things. So it's not as much us assembling the other land for us, it's not having the other property owner assemble this piece and allowing them to go ahead and build something there that we couldn't stop, but that we don't want.
No, no, I understand, but if they don't agree to sell, or they agree to sell at a very high price, we have nothing, we have a tenth of an acre with no access to the lake, unless the adjacent property owners agree to sell at some price down the road. So if, if that was already agreed upon, or we had an agreement with the adjacent property owners, this might make some sense to me, but, but we're basically at a best case, and that's if the neighbors raise a million six and they sell it to us for a million, two twenty-five, we have a tenth of an acre with no access to Lake Nona, or Lake Dona, Lake Yola, unless the adjacent property owners agree to do something. And my position is, if they're going to sell it, then sell it to us, let's do it right now.
Well, I think the reason, again, that the young ladies, I'll call them, that started the Orlando Trust was that they didn't want to see a different use made of all of the three of those lots that are along that way. So it was more of a defensive play than an offensive play.
Understood, but a very expensive one, sir. That's, that's my point. And that's why, that's why I don't support it, I support buying it, but this, this, the economics are just way too expensive for a tenth of an acre with no access to the lake.
Okay.
Thank you.
Others? Hearing none on the motion.
I can just say that the value is almost five million, so this has been significantly discounted, and it is worth the investment, I think. And, and I just want to thank you, Commissioner Hill, I forgot about Ted, oh my God, he's so awesome. So thank you, Ted Haddock, and everybody who's working so hard on this. So that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
How was the value, five million, Commissioner? I missed that.
That was the, that was the assessed value of going in, and the person who sold it to has discounted it significantly.
Well, don't tell Rick Sing, because, don't tell Rick Sing, because it's on Rick's payroll right now at $997,000. So don't tell Rick the assessed value's higher, because he's losing tax revenue.
We won't, and I don't think he's listening in right now.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's see, let's try it again. So all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, six-one with Commissioner Gray on the negative side.
Thank you.
Thomas, one other item?
Yes, sir, thank you. Item two is approving amendment to the agreement between My Debt Services, Inc., which DBA Block by Block, or Ambassador Services. You recall back in July 2000, the CRA contracted with Block by Block to provide a hospitality and safety focused ambassador program in downtown. Since that time, the program's been operating seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. It was, it was implemented as a two-year pilot, during which time the impacts would be evaluated throughout those two years. That evaluation has been ongoing, insights from those observations and metrics have reinforced the need for additional ambassador resources, including the addition of outreach ambassadors, who would be further trained ambassadors, that would be further trained to specifically follow up more comprehensively with our chronic homeless, some of whom are aggressive panhandlers within the Orange Mountain area, as well as including an addition of some more outreach, I mean, some more safety ambassadors to cover more territory, and an operation supervisor. That operation supervisor would govern the outreach ambassadors, but also would serve as an assistant to the ops manager and be an ops assistant manager. So the proposed amendment to the agreement with Block by Block extends the terms through January of 2022, and the scope of work provides for, as I said, additional safety ambassador hours, new outreach ambassadors, there'd be two of those, and as well as the assistant ops manager pursuant to the schedule of upcoming CRA. All in all, the contract goes in terms of men hours rather than people, but for outreach ambassadors, the equivalent of two outreach ambassadors coming on, and the additional safety ambassadors, there's an equivalent to 1.5, so 60 hours, 64 hours a week, and of course, 40 hours associated with the assistant ops manager that would be coming on.
Move to approve.
Mayor? Motion by Commissioner Hill, yes. Commissioner Ortiz?
No, go ahead. The motion is finished? Listen, let me wait until...
Second, second by Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Ortiz? Just before you go there. Thomas, were you here for agenda review?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Stewart had asked to get, you showed me some figures the other day.
I'm sorry, and Kevin's already emailed, and we're working on that right now.
Yeah, Mayor, yes, thank you, Mayor. When I was being brief, I asked also for some paperwork on this, to see the return on investment on this. I guess I know there's a tangible side and an intangible one, and I have not really seen the results of this particular program. I have consulted with law enforcement and with other people in the city. I don't know if this program has been as successful as, as some people say it has, and I have a problem continuing to invest on something that I have not seen results yet. So I would like to see some, some data before I vote, you know, for something like this, so.
So Mayor, if, if, I understand, I do believe that staff has forwarded some of the metrics that we get from, from the program. If we have an project, we'll send more of that, obviously, if we have that. I do want to say this, being in fairly consistent touch with our stakeholders within downtown, I don't know of a program that, that we have invested in over the last few years that has been received more positively, particularly by business owners and property owners in down, in the downtown area. I understand what Commissioner Ortiz is saying, certainly I do, and so forth, discerning value, but a lot of that value is probably not so easy to detect and discern, and as you talk to certain property owners and visitors in downtown. Sometimes seeing is believing, and it's the additional presence of uniform, of uniforms in the area has been big. Just, just recently with, with the protests coming in into downtown, for example, and this is something the metrics will never cover, but our ambassadors have been invaluable at being out block by block, feet on the ground, boots on the ground, as they say, and being able to relay back real-time information as to what's happening everywhere as it's happening. They're also very much on top of social media, and as you know, that's been the platform by which a lot of these protests have been organized, some of them by design have been organized on the fly, so that law enforcement has minimal time to, to prepare. And again, we, so we've been able to pass on information through our ambassadors to OPD, which they certainly indicated they appreciate. So I just, I use that as one recent example, but the value of the program goes, it can be seen in, in the numbers, but I think it also goes beyond that. There's a certain intangible benefit that is significant and substantial for visitors who feel more safe, who feel safer because of the presence of these uniform ambassadors and their assistance.
Thomas, this data you're talking about needs to be attached to this proposal for us to see what's going on, so we can, you know, candidly vote on something like this. But if we don't have the data, it's hard for us to keep approving expenditures unless we have, we see the return on investment.
Certainly understand that, Commissioner, and I, again, as you know, I was not this week involved, or last week, in the, in the briefings with commissioners, but my understanding is that when you ask for that information, that that information has been forwarded to you. Again, I thought that it already happened, I'll be checking, we're checking on that right now, and certainly we'll share it with, as Kevin has asked us during this meeting, we'll share it with all the commissioners, so that you all have the same information. But we have lots of data.
Thank you. Matt, Matt speak for a moment? Thank you, sir. So as I remember the initiation for this program, and of course, with all due respect, Commissioner Ortiz, of course, I do respect the eyewitness report of our good men and women of Orlando Police Department. But this, we have to remember that this particular initiative was not a law enforcement-driven initiative. It never had been, it never was supposed to be. They was not supposed to be the eyes, now they, they were supposed to help be directors of, of waymakers, of people coming to the downtown area, assisting them, and also being good ambassadors to our homeless population. And that I do believe, you can't really do numbers with contact on that. And I, and I do agree with Commissioner Ortiz, you know, if you want monies, you need to show results and numbers. But as you stated, Thomas, certain things that these ambassadors do, you can't put a number on it. We can't say how many times that they touched a homeless person's hand. We can't say how many smiles and encouraging words they gave to our homeless, or how many times they helped someone find their way to the car after a long night downtown, let's say, all right? Those things can't be measured. Also, I do believe that this is the need, this particular amendment agreement, amendment to the agreement with My Debt Services, is this, that we need case managers, that's something, the only thing that Block by Block could do was refer out. Now, if, if the whole team got it and showed up 15, 20 days later, that's not the ambassador's fault. If they put a call out to OPD, no one showed up, because there were some more pressing things outside of a homeless person refusing to get up off the ground by, on the side of a storefront, that's another. But we surely need to support this today. But we surely need to support this today because this is about case management. We need someone on the Block by Block team as they expand, right, uh, this area to actually go to the spot and be a case manager for this particular initiative. So I, I, uh, hopefully, uh, Commissioner, that's what we're looking at. I totally agree. Uh, we do need numbers and, and results, uh, but we haven't given, has it even been enacted over a year and a half or so? I don't think so yet. So, so we, so, so we still need time to see if it is right. But I can say someone that, anybody that know me, I pop up everywhere. I'm always riding throughout District Five. That's why staff be working so much because I'm always seeing something and calling and say, we got a problem, fix it. And, and I ride downtown and, and throughout, uh, near Lake Yola and all over just looking, because we got a beautiful city. Not that I'm looking for problems. I just like riding through our city. And I see those guys everywhere, everywhere, and they don't even know who I am. None of those guys know me. None of those women know me, but they always got a smile. They always say hello. They're always walking. I don't see them hiding behind a, a bench somewhere sitting down. They're always walking. And, and I see them, uh, I stand back sometime. I see them interacting with the very people that we contracted them to interact with. So, um, uh, that's why I'm supporting this. I'm not saying that we don't need to, and the mayor said that there's some information available. Uh, but I would hope that we continue to, uh, to, uh, uh, support this organization. Uh, I'd like to ask Commissioner, Commissioner, um, uh, Gray, does he see the difference? Because, you know, he's, he's a downtowner when it comes to businesses, and this was something that, you know, I, I, I think he supported and many other business owners supported downtown. Have you seen a difference, Commissioner Gray, if it's okay to ask?
He's not a fan of the speak anyways, I think.
No, no, and I appreciate you asking. I, I think the overall answer is not much improvement, but let's be fair, in the last three to four or five months, things have been upside down, so it's probably not fair. But, but here's where I think Tony's right, and here's why I say this, and this is my challenge with this. We, we decided to do this pilot program two years ago, and we devoted, I think, the, the financial statement shows three hundred and fifty thousand bucks to, to, to fund it. And here we are two years later, the, and, and without, because pilot program to me by definition means you think it's going to work, but there will be a few areas that, that don't work, and that's the, the basis for a pilot program to work out the kinks and do it. So here we are, CRA Thomas is coming back, asking us to triple, right, triple. We're going to spend a million bucks a year on this. Triple our commitment, and we don't know, there's no doubt, they're nice people. I see them on the street. They're always pleasant. But we don't know, in, in the indicators that, that Thomas's office gave me were, were contacts, right? How many people they, as you suggest, helped to get home at night, how many people they've talked. But what we don't know is how many of those folks that they touched, were they able to transition from the street into some kind of program, right, to help them? And, and without knowing that, you say to yourself, well, do we give them more money? Maybe a million's not enough. Maybe we ought to be giving them two million if they're that good. We just don't know. And, um, that, that's where I struggle with it. I'm, I'm not opposed to the program, but if we can't measure it, I don't know how we say to ourselves, gee, are we going to get three times the results? Prove this? I, I don't know. And, um, I think Tony's right. We got to measure it.
That's where the case manager is going to come in.
Mayor, may I say something?
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, sir, and I, and I appreciate, um, all of you, and, and Commissioner Hill, I understand this is not a law enforcement. I never said this is a law enforcement program, but I had the, the opportunity to work downtown when I was in law enforcement for quite a bit. And, and I know I used to, at five o'clock or four thirty in the morning, I used to go onto the bridges and wake up some of the, the homeless and, and guide them to whatever they were going to work or tell them, you need to, you know, get out of here, whatnot, and, and, and help them also sometimes directing them to, to places for they, for them to be able to get food or whatnot. One of the issues that has to do with this program, and I saw this coming from the get-go, is that these ambassadors, they're not equipped to deal with some of these homeless people. Some of them are violent. And because of that, you have to have law enforcement, which are equipped, which have a tool belt around their waist, and they're more able and capable of dealing with this. And I'm not saying that every homeless person is, uh, is violent or anything like that. The other thing is people downtown recognize law enforcement. It's harder for them to, to go, and I, you know, in the years I, I worked downtown, I never saw anybody going to one of these ambassadors, and we used to have them, you know, what is that? It's not a scooter. It's a, that other vehicle. We had that as an, another pilot program. It didn't work either. So I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that this may not work. I'm not saying that. I'm just, all I'm looking for is data. I'm, I'm really eager to, to examine the data and see where we can, we can take this. But I just haven't seen something approved, especially now with the COVID nineteen on top of us, and who knows how long this is going to last. Um, I haven't seen something that supports this particular program right now.
Commissioner, I want to make sure we all understand, we're not replacing police officers with these, uh, I get it. We're supplementing police officers and letting them do some of the more routine things that frees up police officers to do other things that they're equipped to do. So I'm supportive of that, although, Thomas, you're hearing the concern about being able to understand that there is a value to having the ambassadors. So I'd say to you, you need to figure out how we can convey to Commissioner Gray and to Commissioner Ortiz that this has been of value. So figure out metrics or however you can, um, however you can measure or convey, even if it's anecdotally, that these people have been taken off the street or these people have, um, received treatment or whatever. Let's come up with a better system of valuing the results of what the ambassadors are doing.
Certainly look to do that. I do want to, uh, just point out, Mayor, and we will certainly, we will struggle to do that, but I want to point out one thing. Commissioner Gray, um, it is, is, is not correct that we're looking to triple our investment. Those are not the numbers. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm happy to share the numbers with you, uh, at the right time. Uh, the investment goes from, uh, uh, around number of six thousand dollars up to around number of eighty-five thousand dollars per month. So it, it's a, it's a significant add, but it's not, it's not, it's not anything close to tripling. The other thing I want to make sure everybody understands is we're still in a pilot. This would extend the pilot. It would end in January of twenty twenty-two. At that time, you will get to make a decision as to whether you want an ambassador program or not. That's what the pilot is for. And so we will bring all the information and we will do a better job of sharing more information, more data and whatnot with you as we go along. Uh, but, um, there won't be any extensions. The law will not, wouldn't allow it anyway. And so at that time, uh, you, you, you'll make what we hope is a, a very, um, uh, informed decision on, on, on this very, uh, threshold question of whether downtown should have an ambassador program or not. Uh, having said that, um, anecdotally, Mayor and, and to others, uh, it, it is difficult to, to convey, uh, value sometimes in something like this where the intangibles are, are over-reliant. We'll, we'll certainly strive to do a better job of that and sit down one-on-one with commissioners to see what it is that would, it would take, that they would be impressed with, uh, in order to, uh, make a favorable impression on them. Last thing I'll say is all of us travel, and I will say to you that people that go into progressive downtowns expect to see this type of service. They see it in most every downtown in America, and, 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 and that's not proof positive, of course, that, that there is quote-unquote value, but, uh, that expectation is there, and, uh, but we certainly will take the charge, Mayor, to, to see if we can do a better job of somehow conveying what that value is on an ongoing basis to you as you ultimately make a decision on whether or not we should have an ambassador program.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yep. Um, Thomas, let me ask you a quick question. Is there any particular reason why this has to be done today and couldn't be done two weeks from now? Because I, the questions that got raised here when I saw the form is you've had fifty thousand contacts, uh, and with respect to, uh, Commissioner Hill, you actually are tracking those very things that she says you may not be tracking. And so, um, I, I, I mean, I kind of like to, I like to have a kind of better discussion about that. Um, because I, I, like Commissioner Gray, I, when you see a pilot program, I, I don't think it was our intent that we would provide seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and then to shit, then to, then to, then to be quiet for three years to decide whether it's going to be successful. I thought it was our intent that we would see something more regular, and I, six months every year or so to find out what the progress is, what's happening downtown and a, a way to communicate back to us what's happening downtown. Here it looks like you're good, about fifty thousand contacts of some sort, and almost forty-three or forty-four thousand are homeless-related issues. So I, I'd like to kind of say, well, wait a second, is this what we're seeing? Then are there other things that we ought to be doing that within this pilot program to make it more effective? Instead of just saying it's a kind of a, a, you know, a, a winner-take-all, I mean, and, and that's a concern that I have. Is there any reason why this can't be done, approved two weeks down the road instead of being done today? We can delay it, get two weeks? Questions answered?
I am not aware that two weeks would be, uh, a deal killer, if I can put it that way, Commissioner. Uh, you did see, I mean, there are contractual dates that are pertinent to the original contract. It was done in July of two thousand eighteen. It was a two, a two-year contract, so, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that it ends, uh, in July of this year or maybe at the end of June. I have to look at the date. But, um, um, I, I'm, I'm not aware that two weeks, uh, would, 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 would be, you know, a significant problem.
Okay, I'd rather not see it today, so, well, I'm going to take the suggestion to defer it for, well, I'm not going to defer it to a certain time, but to bring it back. But one thing, Thomas, is you mentioned that, uh, there's been no program that you've gotten more support from business owners in the downtown, so maybe a representative survey of some of those business owners that think it's of great value so that you could, um, give us some examples of that?
Certainly.
Well, Mayor, if I may?
Commissioner Ortiz?
I'm sorry, um, I, I just, I was just made aware, yeah, recently I, I did receive an ambassador program, uh, statistic line item. And out of all these items, uh, there's two that are important, safety escort, we have one hundred and sixty-six, and hospitality assistance, eighty-three fifty-nine. The majority of the other ones are observations. Observe homelessness, homelessness in the evening. Observe homelessness in the morning. Uh, observe protein. I don't know what that means. Panhandle, observe panhandling, observe in the evening, observe, I mean, what are we accomplishing with this, with observing this? I mean,
Well, Commissioner, what we're accomplishing is, you know, the observations, uh, stimulate communication. So depending on what the ambassador is observing, he or she then communicates the need to address what's being observed. So in, in cases of observing homelessness, uh, many times are we're calling, uh, the Hope Team. If we're observing aggressive panhandling, we're calling, uh, OPD, uh, and so, so that, those observations stimulate an, an interaction.
The clean team would come and take care of the protein.
That's correct.
That's what, Thomas, real quick before we get off of this, uh, can you please, I think the me, the, the, the component to this new amendment, because this is amendment, those some dollars that comes with it for salary, I'm certain, uh, is that fact of those two case managers. Now, that's what's been missing, and that's what I hear my colleagues talking about, that, you know, uh, they see the observations, but after that, what happened? And so really, I think we have to go to our partners, rather than the Hope Team over there at, uh, 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 Healthcare for the Homeless, or whomever are, whoever they're referring these observations to, maybe they have the numbers, right? And I know that's what that case manager will be doing. Now, they will be the purveyor of being that liaison between Block by Block and the resources for homeless that's out there in the community. And now they, we will be able to track that person, because that's what's missing. We don't have a way to track the actual individual for expected outcome. But with this new case manager, they will be able to, so maybe we need, as the mayor stated, and, and as, uh, my colleague stated, you know, if, if there's no urgency, I agree that we, we pull this and, 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 and work with Block by Block to put a curriculum, well, uh, uh, we already have the job description, but some type of curriculum, for lack of better words, together, uh, uh, own what these new jobs will, will do and how it will accent this program as we move it forward.
Commissioner, okay. Do we have a motion to defer to another meeting?
I motion to defer since I motion approve.
Second?
Second, I'll mo- I'll in favor of the motion to defer this item to a future men, meeting indicates so by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, further business up to CRA, Thomas?
Uh, there's none more, Mayor. Thank you.
Then we'll stand adjourned and reconvene the City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, you are up, hearing these ordinances, first reading.
Okay, it's a reminder, those of you joining us live and would like to provide a public comment for ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty, please use the raise hand feature to request a speaker dial nine if you're on the phone at this time. Ordinance twenty twenty dash, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the city's growth management plan, providing the summer twenty twenty package of growth management amendments pursuant to the expedited state review process, establishing future land use element policy five point three point two to exempt certain conference meeting and ballroom space in the downtown Orlando community redevelopment area from floor area ratio calculations. Providing for amendment of the city's growth management plan, providing for severability, corrections, governor's errors, and an effective date.
Removed.
Second? Exactly, Mr. Sheen, the moved, uh, second by Commissioner Stewart. Do we have any requests to participate in this one?
I do not have any speaker forums or any hands raised.
Okay, commission, any discussion commissioners? Then all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, and so it passes. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city, certainly and generally located east of Nukusi Road, south of Kirby Smith Road, and west of Lake Whippoorwill, and comprised of seventeen point two five acres of land, more or less, mending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as Urban Village on the city's official future land use map, and to establish a sub-area policy to provide detailed development criteria, providing for consent to the municipal services taxing unit for Lake Whippoorwill, providing for amendment of the city's growth management plan, providing for severability, corrections, governor's errors, and an effective date.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve, along with my thanks to fellow commissioners for, uh, allowing me to defer this for a meeting so that I could work with staff and, and, uh, developer to work out some, uh, some, some points, and I'm satisfied. So thanks to all for your patience, and I, uh, recommend approval.
Second.
Second.
Uh, who, who had the, well, I heard Commissioner Stewart. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Do we have any requests from the public, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I had five speaker requests from the public, uh, in support of this item. Um, for the record, just want to state their name, Rebecca Wilson, uh, Tim Graff, Heather Isaacs, Iman Asadi, and Bobby Wanas, and they all have said that they would speak if you had questions or needed them to speak.
I think they're in pretty good shape as it is, so discussion among commissioners, hearing not all in favor of the motion, and is, uh, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk, we will, uh, move to hearings, ordinances on second reading.
Okay, just a reminder again, if you're joining us live and you would like to provide a co- public comment, use the raise hand feature or press star nine on the phone at this time. Ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located south of Orange Center Boulevard and west of South Tampa Avenue comprised of one point three six acres of land, more or less, from residential low intensity and residential medium intensity to neighborhood activity center, changing the property zoning designation from medium intensity development district and one-family residential district to neighborhood activity center district, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of governor's error, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
The move. Mr. Burns, second by Commissioner Hill. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that would like to testify?
We do not, Mayor.
Discussion among commissioners, hearing not all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, hearings, ordinance, second reading number two.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the packing district planned development zoning ordinance for property generally located along West Princeton Street and Orange Blossom Trail between the CSX rail line and John Young Parkway, and comprised of one hundred point one acres of land, more or less, to update the sign regulations and to update the list of. and to update the list of exhibits to include the master sign plan, providing for severability, corrections of governor's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen, speakers, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we don't have any speakers.
Discussion, hearing none on in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As both motion carries. Okay, ordinances, first reading, number one.
Ordinance 2020-29, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending chapter two, article 32, Orlando City Code, to clarify the procedures for city councils' consideration of a recommended order from a hearing officer in a quasi-judicial hearing, providing legislative findings and for severability codification, corrections of governor's errors, and an effective date.
Removed.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have one appearance request form.
Okay.
My place here, um, we have one request form from Luanne Gelsner, uh, Ms. Gelsner, you have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
First of all, this is a hearing, and Luanne Gelsner, 7674 St. Stevens Court, I have a camera, so while on one meeting, I was able to be seen speaking, but now, uh, public comment, I'm not being able to speak right here, so that's a very concern to me, um, that the process, I have a camera, so it's been done in the past, so why not now? I come before you to say, how much more power do the city of Orlando need when it comes to citizens saying certain things that you do in our community, we don't want? And I'm really, I, I'm going to go back on the history of the quasi-hearing process, it used to be $250, now it's $500. We used to have 45 days to respond, now it's 25 days. Now it's like, every time you have the opportunity to strip citizens that you work for, the opportunity to question you, or to say that this is not what we want in our community, you change the finish line, you change the starting line, you make it so difficult that you think we will go away. Like I spoke earlier, what is going on in America today is not just racial tensions being exposed, but the economic, economic problems that we see in our community over and over again, even with this process, the changes that have been made, so the camera's not there, so people don't know who's talking, you have control of that, you know I had a camera, because you've done it in the past. I just say this, how much power do you need? And it's clear, because of this pandemic, and because people can't be there, because people are, are trying to survive through these troubling times, you change the plan to make it difficult for them to participate and question you. You spent so much time on the, um, the purchasing of the land at the, uh, for the, at Lake Yola Green Space, but before you to say thousands of trees in the wetland, Community and Mercy Drive, it falls on deaf ears. So what you think you're doing is harming us, but you're harming the future, and people can see what you're doing. You won't be here when the, when the effects start to happen to the community, but one of the effects that's going to happen to Mercy Drive is that they all been told to get flood insurance, questioning the air quality that we're dealing with in the paramo community. We see you constantly spend money and spend time on programs, but when the citizens say, we just want to be treated like everybody else, it falls on deaf ears. So you feel like silencing us, we're not. If you can see the tension in America, people are tired, and we're saying enough is enough, and the world is watching all over, I'm getting calls everywhere. So to see this process of taking away the rights of citizens to just say, we don't want to do this, changing the price, you, even one time when we was going to do something with the wetland, you allocated $467,000 for mitigating credits for a lawyer to fight your own citizens, but you just spent almost $1.5 billion for a tenth of an acre, but you've destroyed almost 40 acres on the west side of town when it comes to people of color. So I say, how much power do you need? And why during the pandemic? And why are you stripping citizens? Whether we like you or not, whether we voted for you or not, whether we question why you doing it or not, why are you stripping them of the right to question what is going on in Orlando, and why are you doing it only to a select group? And why this process that we say is for us to say, we don't want something in our community? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Madam Clerk, do you have any other requests to testify?
No, Mayor.
Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As both motion carries. Uh, number two, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2020-32, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for approximately 0.35 acres of land generally located north of West Muriel Street, west of South Orange Avenue, and south of West Harding Street, from residential medium intensity to mixed-use corridor medium intensity on the city's official future land use maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use maps, providing for severability, corrections of governor's errors, and an effective date.
Removed. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill, do we have any, uh, members of the public that request to testify on this matter, Madam Clerk?
I do not have any, Mayor.
Discussion among commissioners, seeing none on in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As both motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2020-33, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Starwood Plan Development Zoning District, providing for amendment of special land development regulations, providing that prior ordinance is still in effect, providing for permit disclaimer, correction of governor's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner, who is that? Stewart, um, is there anyone that is, wants to testify on this matter, uh, Madam Clerk?
I have no public requests or no hands raised, Mayor.
Discussion, hearing none on in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As both motion carries. Okay, number four, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2020-34, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located east of Nucusi Road, south of Kirby Smith Road, and west of Lake Whipporwill, and comprised of 17.25 acres of land, more or less, as the Plan Development District, providing a development plan and special land development regulations, the Plan Development District, providing for severability, corrections of governor's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Moved to approve. Most likely, Commissioner Gray.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheen, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we received one public, uh, appearance request from Heather Isaacs, who also submitted a PowerPoint presentation that we forwarded to the commission earlier today, but she's available to speak if you, you have questions or you need to speak with her.
Okay, she's in support of the?
Yes, in support.
Uh, I think we're okay, everybody got the packet of materials, not a chance to read that, okay. Uh, discussion, hearing none on in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As both motion carries. Okay, that concludes the agenda business of the Orlando City Council.
Mayor, if, if I may, um, I've been seeing some, um, some, uh, social media, I forgot to bring it up in my comments because I was a little passionate earlier, I'm going to be seeing some comments about a lot of people, I don't know if they're from out of town, they might not be aware of some of the, um, programs like Orlando Speaks and things like that, that we've been doing in the community, is there a way to kind of push that out to let people know that we have been listening and working with law enforcement and the community, and that we?
That at the, uh?
That process.
Commissioner Sheen, we did exactly that at the press conference at, that we held at 12:30 at OPD, talked about, um, the proactive measures that we've taken with Orlando Speaks and, uh, a variety of things, so we will push that out on social media as well.
Perfect, thank you.
And Mayor, Mayor, I also was kind of, um, hyped up when I was doing mine, but I wanted to, um, just commend this city and especially, uh, as you, with your leadership, and also, uh, Chief Ralone and, um, Chief, uh, excuse me, Sheriff, I'm still getting it mixed up, Sheriff Mina, I know it was talked about them kneeling and, and showing solidarity with the community, but, uh, uh, for me, when I saw that, I saw something iconic, and I think the world, and especially the nation, agree with it, because they highlighted that today, uh, Good Morning America, uh, uh, Chief Mina, Sheriff Mina and, uh, Chief Ralone, because to see when Ca, when, when Cole and Kaepernick, uh, uh, kneel, the retribution that he got for doing that, and he was just trying to highlight police brutality, to see a sheriff and a chief kneel down on their knees to say, now we understand, that, I think that, that picture in itself is going to be a historic picture, and that represents Orlando.
That was very.
That represents Orlando.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, then we will conclude the agenda portion of our meeting.